I will call to order the meeting for Wednesday, October 1st. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Allen.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Clayton.
Present.
Commissioner Kayler.
Present.
Commissioner Crowley.
Present.
And Commissioner Skidmore.
I would like to welcome everyone here in the audience as well as everyone watching or listening at home. Today, we will begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation by our City Manager, Silkott, from the city.
Heavenly Father, you sent your Son among us to proclaim the Kingdom of God in cities, towns, villages, and lonely places. Behold and visit, we pray, our community of Ottawa. Renew the bonds of charity and uphold our civic life. Deliver us from poverty, prejudice, and opposition and oppression. That peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with mercy. And that last, bring us your holy city, the city on the hill, the new Jerusalem, where we shall know perfect unity and peace. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you. We will start with public comments. Do we have any registered?
We have four.
Okay. Subject to the above restrictions, persons who wish to address the City Commission regarding items on the agenda may do so as that agenda item is called. Persons who wish to address the City Commission regarding items not on the agenda and that are under the jurisdiction of the City Commission may do so at this time when called upon by the mayor. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court or with other outside tribunals are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Any presentation is for information purposes only. The governing body will take comments under advisement. Who is our first one?
Greg Hazen.
Okay.
Once again, I'm here over the golf course. Gave you guys 30 days. You guys said you was gonna get old of me. Nobody ever contacted. I think it's time for OSHA and ADA to get involved and get something done. You know, I suggest we just take the golf course out and make that the new swimming pool and park. Let the public in there. The way I understand it, you gotta be voted in to even get on the public, on the golf course. So it's not even a public golf course. I guess you gotta join the club or something? I don't know. But if it's city-owned, anybody ought to be able to go over there and play. We got kids that used to fish that pond all the time. Now they can't even fish it. They get run off of there. Is it city? No. It's a club. And it's sad that it comes down to that. And it's sad that you gotta fight your way through to get the city to do something. Everything that has to be done around here, you gotta fight, scratch, and scream and holler. There's no reason for it. We all got the same rights as you guys got. I mean, all we're asking for is a little bit of cooperation and we can't get it. So somebody, please tell me how I'm supposed to get it without being a jerk. I mean, you got roads, you know, after the last meeting, you know, they was out, they's patching. Now you don't see nothing. It just, one day, and that's it. It just, something's gotta be done. Can't keep going the way going. Got a truck that got hit. Got windows that got hit. On the way here, right out in the middle of 68, there's golf ball. Car hits that golf ball, what's gonna happen? It's flying. It's a flying object. Everybody knows what happens when a car hits a golf ball. It shoots out there mighty fast, dangerous. You can't walk on the sidewalk. You can't do nothing. Something's gotta be done. We gotta go through OSHA to get it done, then so be it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Okay, and who do we have next?
Joseph Hazen.
Good evening, everybody. Me and my family, my dad's been here for several years, but me and my wife and my children moved here 12 years ago. We bought a property here and I love raising my family here. My road is not taken care of. I have a ditch that overflows every time it rains. I got a tree line that is right in the middle of a roadway. And I can show you GIS surveys if you would like, has dead trees in it that every time the wind blows, I have branches that come off the middle of the road that I have to remove to gain access to my property. And when I talked to the city about it, they came out and told me it was my problem because I removed the branches to gain access to my property and because it runs up along my property that it's my problem. No, it's not my problem. It's not on my property. That is a roadway that goes through there, even though it dead ends at my property. If you look at the GIS, it's a roadway. It's a right of way that goes through there for a future road, whatever y'all have planned. I would like to have that taken care of and I got a pothole at the end of my driveway in the roadway every time it rains that I could go fishing in. I've talked to the city about it. They've done nothing about it. They said, oh, we'll get to you. They haven't. I have a water culvert runs under my driveway that has collapsed. Every time it rains, water flows over my driveway. I tried putting gravel in it out of, or over my driveway, out of my pocket. It washes it away, exposes the culvert. Every time. I get told, well, if you wanna fix the culvert, you wanna replace it, you have to pay for it. No, no, that's on, that's on y'all. That ain't on me. Because it's on y'all. It's on right of way.
Could you let us know where you live?
811 Liberty Street.
Thank you.
Bentley. Chad is the guy I talked to at the city. Him and his guy came out there. They looked at it. I showed him the GIS map about the tree line. Every time the wind blows, I have to remove brush out of the roadway to get into my driveway. I've lived there for nine years. When I bought the property, my property tax was $2,000 a year. In nine years, it has almost tripled. And y'all do nothing for me outside of taking my money. So I would like to see that fixed. And I'm sure there's all kinds of property owners within the city that would like to see that fixed. Thank you.
Zachary Scott.
I mean, this like happened a few months ago, like I think during July. I was like walking on the public bike trail, but, but like I had to like take a detour on Main Street because like the like public, oh, it's like clean up bridges, which is good. I do like that. But like when I was like going back onto the bike trail, I think I saw a bunch of used labels next to a sewer drain. Um, so I was just kind of concerned like if there might be a drug problem in Ottawa.
Do you know about what street you were on?
Um, I think I was close to like, um, do you know where like those like painted tires are? Like on that street?
Okay.
Next to like a sewer drain.
And thank you for bringing that to our attention. In the future, if you come across something like that and you're able, if you would call 911, that would, would help immensely and we could mitigate it immediately. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Charlie Adamson.
Good evening. I just wanted to raise my concern again about the trees on South Main and how ugly they are. And I feel like they'd ought to all be cut down pretty well from 7th to 14th anyway. I think the furthest south one is actually in the terrace of the cancer building. I kind of imagine, I can, I can see this maybe possibly the city thinking that this is the homeowner's problem because it's on the terrace. And I, my understanding is, is that residents are supposed to mow and maintain their terraces. But then it dawned on me also, and I'm not saying anyone's at fault, but I would like to see the city maybe bear some responsibility. I, I feel like probably every one of those trees was planted at the same time. And it probably happened during, I mean, I can remember a curb and gutter project. There's been projects along Main Street. But if you look at those trees down through there, and here again, I just bring this up because I'm hoping maybe it'll help the city make a decision. Those trees are as evenly spaced as they can be. They're all exact, they're all elms. They're all dying at the same time. Um, there's no way that the people on that side of Main Street or anywhere up and down Main Street got together and said, hey, let's plant a bunch of trees that are gonna die in 20 years. So anyway, I brought this up several months ago. I don't know if it's going anywhere or not. I just wanted to rattle the cage.
And thank you. In fact, on the 15th, and you'll see in my City Manager comments, that we have um, a tree inventory from the State Forester who will be here. And we'll also be highlighting a, a grant that we've received that will help with a portion of this. And then we also are in the process of developing a kind of joint public-private mitigation plan to be able to assess this. It is, it is a priority. It's just, it's taken some time and in order for us to potentially receive grant funding in the future, having and utilizing the State Forestry Program for the inventory and the assessment will be essential for future funding. So thank you for bringing this.
That sounds positive.
Yes, sir.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to appointments, proclamations, recognitions, and nominations. We have proclamation recognizing October 5th through 11th as Fire Prevention Week. Since 1922, fire departments have been actively supported Fire Prevention Week, making it the longest-running public health and safety observance on record. This year's campaign focus is charge into fire safety, lithium ion batteries in your home. Fire Chief Dylan will accept the proclamation, which will be read by Mayor Pro Tem Clayton.
The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the city of Ottawa, Kansas is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Ottawa. Whereas, fire is a very serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally. And homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire. And whereas, home fires caused 2,760 civilian deaths in the United States in 2022, according to the National Fire Protection Association. And fire departments in the United States responded to 360,000 home fires. And whereas, smoke alarms send smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of a fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas, Ottawa's residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of smoke alarms and knows how to respond. And whereas, Ottawa's residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will likely be more, and therefore will be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, Ottawa's residents will make sure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas, Ottawa's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, Ottawa's residents who are responsive to public education measures are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their home. And whereas, the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, Smoke Alarms, Make Them Work For You, effectively serves to remind us it is important to have working smoke alarms in their homes. Therefore, the governing body of the city of Ottawa does hereby proclaim the week of October 5th through 11th, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week and urges the citizens of Ottawa to plan and practice a home fire escape for Fire Prevention Week and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Ottawa's Fire and Emergency Services. Signed this the first day of October, 2025, by our Mayor Emily Allen.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. It's October again, so we're doing Fire Prevention Month. I wanted to go through some little facts and statistics real quick and then talk about what we'll be doing in the schools for the rest of the month. Uh, this year's Fire Prevention Week runs October 5th through the 11th. We're gonna go past that till approximately the 23rd. Where we'll be in the schools. Uh, it is a discussion about lithium ion batteries in your home is kind of the focus. Lithium ion battery fires are on the rise across the country. In 2023, New York City alone saw 268 caused, 268 fires caused by lithium ion batteries resulting in 150 injuries and 18 deaths. Nationally, at least 243 lithium ion battery fires have occurred across the country with another 124 injuries and 17 deaths. Broader data from UL Solutions shows more than 445 incidents across North America with over 200 injuries and nearly 40 fatalities in recent years. And Ottawa is not, uh, immune to it. We've had one residential fire and one lithium ion vehicle fire, so. So just some key safety tips. If you're gonna buy the products, make sure that you're buying them from like a reputable source. Uh, you wanna use the appropriate charging cables that come with the product that you buy. Uh, store them safely in a cool, dry place. Don't use damaged or swollen batteries. They're overheating. And when they go bad, recycle them. You can go to Brinkin County Recycling Center. They're a drop-off site for lithium batteries. That address is 2039 South Elm here in Ottawa. As technology evolves, so do fire risks. Cooking and heating remain the leading cause of home fires. But lithium ion batteries are a fast-growing hazard we cannot ignore. Raising awareness now ensures families know how to use these powerful devices safely and prevention saves lives, property, and resources. In closing, fire safety isn't just the fire department's job. It's everyone's responsibility. This Fire Prevention Week lets us all charge into fire safety by practicing safe habits with batteries that power our daily lives. And again, this year, we're gonna go back to the same format that we did last year with the schools. We did a survey after it was a change. We did a survey with all the teachers and students and everybody seemed to really enjoy this program. So we're gonna stick with that. And firefighter Jamie Rucker, with her educational background, she's a huge resource for us on this. Along with the OU students, they're gonna help volunteer again this year. But, uh, the 6th through the 10th, we'll have some fire safety lessons in the classrooms. 13th through the 16th, we'll have some field days where we do some little practice scenarios and stuff with all the students. And then followed up with engine tours where we'll take our trucks over to each school so the kids can come around and see them. But again, I appreciate the proclamation and your awareness and your support for our department. Keep everybody safe.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes minutes from September 17th, 2025 meeting and the agenda approval. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to give the Commissioners a chance to declare any conflict or communication they've had that might influence their ability to consider today's issues impartially. Seeing none, we will move past unfinished business with nothing under there and we'll start with item 11A.
Consideration of updated municipality agreement with Kansas State Setoff Program.
This item updates the city's agreement with the Kansas State Setoff Program to reflect current statutory and procedural requirements, ensuring continued participation and compliance. And we have Assistant Director McCurdy.
Thank you very much for your time tonight. Um, so in September, the city was notified by the Kansas Department of Administration that the state set off program had updated their municipal agreement. And that in order to continue to participate, we would need to sign and agree to their new agreement. So just a little background about this agreement. Um, the city has had a longstanding relationship with the state set off program, which is what this agreement outlines the parameters for. Um, originally starting in October of 1994. Um, essentially what happens is any outstanding receivables, which for the city is usually just unpaid utility bills. But there has been other things in the past, but that is the majority and that's what we're really here to talk about is those things. Any unpaid utility bills that we are unable to collect, we send to the state and they collect for us. And these are methods that, through which they can collect from their debtors, which is state payroll, uh, income tax return refunds, homestead tax refunds, miscellaneous tax payments, which include if somebody wins the lottery, um, unclaimed property, the capers retirement program, and then this, the newest one is, um, prize-winning payments from state-owned casinos. I thought it would be helpful to just include the last couple of years' worth of collection data, so that would be, um, collection that is made on bad debts. So this is 2022, 23, 24, and 25 here for you. Um, the difference between city staff and set, the set off program, the set off program obviously comes from the state. They do the collecting there and then they remit to us. The city staff is what we collect essentially at the utility window. Really, that's only if somebody were to come sign for new service. We're not actively calling people or trying to chase them down. That's not a role we have historically fulfilled. Um, but, but we do, when people come sign for service, we check their social security number and their name versus our records. And if they have a bad debt, we work out a payment method with them at the window. Um, and then I also included the total outstanding receivables that we have currently in the debt recovery system at state. So those are just the total balances there at the bottom for each year. And you also saw those numbers this year during budget. We talked about those in the increases for the utilities when we discussed each of the utility funds. So I just wanted to bring that back to the front. Now, the differences between the original agreement and the agreement that is before you today for consideration is the, these are the differences. So there's setting termination policy. Before, there wasn't really an outline, but this just says that if either party wants to end this relationship, you just have to give a 30-day notice. Um, the fees, so when they collected the debt for us, they submit, they remit to us, um, their collection net the fees. Uh, so both the fees for deaths that have a social security number and those without, which we collect social security numbers at the window, so all of ours fall into that first category. It just went up 0.6% um, to 19% and then 24% respectively. Um, it also outlined when funds would transfer. I think this has been the method they've been doing for a long time. It just wasn't in the actual agreement. Cause I went back and checked and I think those are pretty regular recurrence, but it outlines when they will refund to, I mean, send funds out to us. Um, then there were just some changes in the kind of when we would have to adjust things on our end. So if we get, if somebody comes in and pays, we notify state set off that day that we collected the funds in-house so that to remove it from the program. Um, and so this just outlined that we needed to immediately let them know when we do that. Um, they also send us what they call like matching paperwork. So they send us an email that says, we've matched this debt to this person. Please confirm that this is what your records show. And so our staff check that every day. And if there's any difference, we need to let them know by 1:00 PM that day and then edit it in their system by the following day. That's what the agreement says now, which is standard practice, what we do right now anyways. Um, bankruptcy proceedings were not outlined in the original agreement, so this just says you need to immediately notify them if your debt within the system falls within a bankruptcy agreement. Um, there are municipalities that have collection agencies that manage their debt set off for them. And so if you do that, you have to notify them in written form that you have given this agency authority to manage this on your behalf. And then they also have an appeal process now, and so they outline it in the agreement. That allows people to have a hearing, which makes total sense. And honestly, I think it's a really great process. And then the city would have to, um, come to the hearing to defend ourselves. And if we do not come to the hearing, then we have to pay a fee for them hosting this hearing. We don't attend, which all seems very reasonable. Um, but those are the differences between the original agreement and the new one. I didn't include it in the notes, but just so, in case you were wondering, we do record the fees that they keep, the netted fees as an expense line within the utility billing budget for, in the division in the electric fund. And so we do that every year. Um, and the last, I think for 26, we budgeted $14,000. Um, but the last three years, we've been under 10 with like 9,800, the last for 23 and 24. And we'll probably hit around that for 25, just, um, for transparency sake on what the fees about equivalent to. Um, currently, the set off program outside of the, literally at the front window, is the only mechanism we're utilizing to collect any sort of outstanding receivables. Um, and then, uh, we did have the city attorney review the agreement and he found it, um, to be above board. And with that, we recommend that you consider, um, authorizing the execution of this updated agreement. Um, or we can come back and talk about it some more.
Do we have any questions?
Do you? Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, does this preclude us from any other type of collection action? In there, I know it mentioned the collection agency. Do we have to, if we enlist a collection agency on top of this program, we just notify the state? Are we able to do that or is this our only avenue if we kind of go this route?
There, there are organizations that do, do collections for municipalities. And, um, I think we even discussed in budget that we were looking into those avenues. Um, don't have quite a recommendation for you yet. Um, but if we partnered with them, um, an agency, whatever one we chose, most of them manage the set off program for you. And so we just have to notify them that we've allowed company, ABC, whatever, you know, to do this on our behalf. And so that would, that would be the avenue. There are state statutes that outline what you can or can't go for collections, if that makes sense. Um, and I'm not an expert, so I won't quote any of that for you, but we obviously would involve, um, our city attorney in any sort of agreement with an agency.
I mean, I'd be in favor of, you know, uh, bringing in a collection agency also. I mean, we're losing over a million dollars a year. Is that what I'm looking at?
So there is, that, that is a typo in my memo, but on the back, I do want to slide back here. That's a total outstanding. It's not new every year.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's rolling.
That's my mistake. Yeah.
So it's grown over, so it's, it's an additional 150,000.
You can very clearly see though, that if you do very simple math of what we collect each year versus how it's grown, it's obviously growing.
Sure.
So we are not collecting more than we are adding to the system every year.
But there's still a 1.1 million dollars of, of debt out there that could be collected.
Yes.
Yeah, so. And I mean, at this rate, they're never gonna collect it, so why not bring in a collection agency if we can?
And Director, or Assistant Director McCurdy, do you know, did they slow the program, do anything during COVID? Just looking at the jump from 12,000, 10,000 to 25 to 49?
Mm-hmm. Um, so during COVID, we could not disconnect for non-payment for a significant amount of time. And so that did allow some bills to get very high. And so then when that was allowed again, um, those, a lot of those debts were set off. Um, so there was that. Um, I do think like internally, we did do a, I mean, you can see a very big shift from 22 to 25. Internally, we have added some new protocol at the end of 24. Internally, we have added some new protocol at the end of 24 that's a little bit more proactive in making some final phone calls. Because before we send it to state set off, we have to notify people three times. And we do three letters essentially to people, three billings. But then we added another step where we tried to call the phone number that was on the account. And so oftentimes what happens is people just move and it's their final bill and they just didn't update their address with us or at the post office and it got sent back. Actually, I called someone today about return mail and that's his exact situation. His address was just wrong in the system. When I called him, he was like, oh, I'll pay you right now. So then that just was just one little tiny extra step that we took. And that's an internal thing we did, so that's what you see there. But I also do think that the state themselves sent out more letters in the last year just because we've gotten more phone calls. So I don't know, I can't speak to their process change, but I do know that we couldn't shut people off for a significant amount of time. And so we did send more to state once we could disconnect for non-payment.
Any other questions? How do we like to proceed?
I'll make the motion, we approve item 11A.
One second.
Okay, any further discussion? May I have roll call vote, please? How do you vote, Mayor Protim Clayton?
Yes.
Commissioner Skidmore is absent. Commissioner Kayler?
Yes.
Commissioner Crowley?
Yes.
And Mayor Allen?
And I vote yes, motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 11B.
Consideration of proposal for Ottawa City Hall HVAC system.
This is the consideration of proposals for providing improvements to the heating, ventilating, and air conditioning HVAC system serving Ottawa City Hall following the RFP process. And we have Director Sommer here presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here with the results of the HVAC RFP. And we will get into the background here. Basically, this building was built in the eighties. The HVAC equipment is essentially like a time capsule true to that era. And we've been fixing it off and on as best we could. I don't want to even add up how many years that is, but since then, we've been fixing it as best we can. But it's not a modern system and it's not efficient. And the refrigerant we use is obsolete and the pneumatic control system is really limited on what we can do. So we did an RFP, this was actually, we go back to 2022 with the general obligation bonds, this project was included in those funds. And so we did RFP on August 4th, 2025. We had a pre-building proposal walkthrough on the August 21st. We had about three different sets of contractors show up and tour the building that morning and we answered any questions that they may have had about the project. And then the proposal deadline was September 11th at 2pm when we opened the proposals in this room. BCI Mechanical was the sole respondent to the RFP, which kind of surprised me. I was expecting, you know, at least two. We're quite familiar with BCI Mechanical, they're the ones who perform most of the maintenance on the building right now. As far as the strategic alignment with this project, it's stewardship of resources and investing in our infrastructure and then also quality of life component just for the experience of people coming down to City Hall. The project was funded by the 2022 GO bond. In 2021, we had an estimate for the project, which is kind of where we got this number for the bond. And it was 1 million, $1,000. The BCI proposal was about $200,000 more than that. However, with cost savings from other bond initiatives and accumulated interest earnings, the project is still able to proceed, even though the estimate was higher than we expected. Legal considerations, the city attorney would ensure compliance with all pertinent legal considerations. So our recommendation would be to select BCI Mechanical to provide the improvements or to refer this to a future city commission meeting for discussion and consideration. We have Jared Mann from BG Consultants is here and we have Brandon Livingston from BCI is here. So if you have any questions whatsoever, feel free, we can get them answered.
Any questions?
Director Summers, you, you mentioned earlier that we were, we use BCI for service and repairs. Do you know roughly what we spend every year servicing repairs?
No.
Do you have an idea?
No. No, because I, I don't handle the repairs, so I'm not familiar with how much the repairs are, you know, but that's a good question.
Would you know, I mean, I'm, I'm just spitballing here just to see. I'm assuming it's. Brandon, can you come up here, please, just, just in case people can, so people can hear you online also? Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandon Livingston, President, BCI Mechanical. So we took over the maintenance, I believe it was around maybe 2012, City Hall. I do know that at that time when we bid the project or we bid the annual maintenance agreement, I believe our price was somewhere between eight and $9,000. Because Clancy Moore at the time asked a lot of questions about our qualifications and what was included, what wasn't included. And at that time, he said that, I said, well, I said, are you concerned about our price? He said, yeah, you're, you're very competitive. And anyway, he's, I guess, I think we were like half of what the city had been paying at that time. So I'm not aware of any major issues that we've had this year and I don't even know if last year. We went through and kind of worked through some of the kinks. There was a lot of unreliabilities, my understanding, leading up to that. We had a few kinks in there, you know, occasionally mechanical part fails, but you know, we've kept the cooling unit running, the boilers have been pretty flawless. Obviously, your controls have got problems. So I know we had talked to Mr. Byrd about that when he was still in position. We had, I'd have given, I think, initial budgeting for this in 2013, if I recall. I think I revisited again in 2015 and 2019. And, and so, you know, again, we're, I feel very blessed that your system is, is still running. So I mean, obviously it's cold in here tonight, but that's a temperature control issue. The condensing unit's been functioning and stuff, but it does use refrigerant R22. And so for those of you who have a system at home, that, that refrigerant's been disallowed in 2010, we could no longer sell equipment with R22. So you've kind of gotten the nine lives out of the machine, I think, and then some. And so, you know, I think the cost escalation that shows, this is a very involved project. If I could just speak just one second on that, it's a very involved project. Essentially, Mr. Mann, on your behalf, has outlined requirements and the zoning. And so, I mean, effectively, we're going to put in new VAV dampers, so the air dampers that control the airflow, go into each subject space. Each of those zones will then have its digital thermostat, DDC controls, direct digital controls, the same platform interface that's currently been used since 2012 at the OMA for their main air handler system. And it's an internet base, the city will be able to monitor it and such, so. But just a lot of zoning in the system and it has the ability to add additional zoning in the future, should you find that necessary. You know, we're going to integrate, tie back into the existing boiler system. Again, it hasn't had problems. And I think the RFP had requested that we, you know, basically reworked that. But there's going to be a lot of work done above the ceilings and though I spoke with, with Paul and with, with Jared both, and just discussed kind of logistics and how we'd work closely with the city to do that, so. But I think the cost escalation, I'll be bluntly honest, it's just absolutely amazing what we have seen costs in our industry do in the last four years, five years since COVID. It's just unparalleled.
Brandon, you mentioned briefly the useful life of, of what's installed now. The building's 41 years old, if I'm doing my math correctly. In your opinion, how long should that system have lasted? How long ago should we have replaced it?
So as, as a licensed engineer and Mr. Mann could chime in here if you'd like, but if I recall, that type of system, the capacity it is, is typically a 20 to 25 year lifespan expectancy. And obviously, I, so I feel very blessed that we've been fortunate that for the last 12 years or so, we've been working with it. And you're currently, what, at 41 years? This building was originally built as the Franklin Savions alone headquarters. And ironically, my father did a lot of work for Franklin Realty who handled their facilities and stuff. So, so anyway, you know, excited to say, I mean, as a steward of taxpayer money, the city has done a very good job. You know, obviously unfortunately, it's time, I think, to, you're gonna, you're gonna reap the benefits of the upgrade, so. Not only from a comfort issue, but also energy and conservation issue that way.
So we've got double the life out of it, pretty much.
Yeah.
Appreciate you saying that. We've been, there's been some suggestions lately that we just like to throw money at things, you know, and that we just like to buy brand new instead of, you know, using what we have. And obviously with, you know, the good work that you guys have put in over the last 12 or 13 years of the upkeep and the, and the maintenance of, you know, what we have in here, we've gotten double the life out of this equipment. So, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to serve.
I was gonna say, just last year for services and maintenance, we spent, and it's not necessarily entirely all on HVAC, but we spent $31,488. And we're on pace for less than that this year, but it's still upwards of about $29,000 for those same service costs.
Then Mr. Silkott, is that, is that just for this building? Okay.
Thank you.
On that, what type of refrigerant is that going to use? Because right, 410A is going out. You can, you can still put it in, right, until everything's depleted and then it goes to 32?
Yeah, well, R410A, so it's, it's inherently designed difference in the equipment. So this will be R454B or R32, which are the two new refrigerants we're using today. And the proposed system that we outlined in our, in our scope of work and proposal, we're going to use a packaged chiller. And so for those of you, if you are, research R454B and R32, not to dive off into the weeds, but they have some mild flammability. And so there's some special detection and alarming and such that have to be done in a split system. So your homes typically have a split system where you've got a coil on your furnace inside and you're condensing you to outside. And so those require some special sensors and it gets a little more complicated. So effectively, what we have proposed, we're going to replace the air hammer in the basement and we'll utilize a chilled water system that'll use a glycol solution, basically have a protection for freeze. And that'll keep all of that refrigerant packaged in the machine outdoors. We've had very good success. We just installed three of this similar machine down the road here at Advent Health in Ottawa. So they've got new chillers over there, similar, similar application. Much bigger system, but some similar application.
And I just wanted to point out for the young students in the audience that 41 is not old unless you're an HVAC system. Is that right?
That's exactly right, I guess.
I just wanted to make that. Do we have any other questions?
I, I just want to make the comment and it kind of piggybacks on what Eric was saying. I did a, I have minutes from every single meeting that I've ever been at as a city commissioner since 2012. And I just did a quick search and I found, I'm thinking probably at least 40 different times we've talked about this since 2012. And I can't tell you, it's like a broken record. I've heard it so many times and I'm shocked that we've kept it, that not, not we, that it is that you and your good work has kept it going.
That's my team of people.
Yes. So thank your people.
We have on team people, I think, I can't keep count now, if it's 10 or 12 or Franklin County residents and many live in Ottawa. And so they're super excited to be involved in the project. Thank you. It feels good to be able to, to serve your community.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so with that, I would make a motion that we approve the HVAC system proposal.
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? May I have roll call vote, please? How do you vote, Commissioner Crowley?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Clayton?
Yes.
Commissioner Skidmore is absent. Commissioner Kayler?
Yes.
And Mayor Allen?
And I vote yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will next go to 11C.
Consider a resolution to amend the current personnel policy handbook.
This proposes a resolution amending the current personnel policy handbook with amendments to section 6.8 non-owned auto policy. And we have Director Segman Jacobson.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So this is a recommendation for the city commission to approve an amendment to the city personnel policy. We recently re-reviewed the non-owned auto policy, which will require an amendment to the existing handbook. And that amendment is to remove the sentence, employees must provide proof that they have declared the use of vehicles for work-owned business to their insurers. And after we implemented the policy, we visited with our Hub International, which is our property casualty broker, who assisted us with that initiative, that policy. And they recommended the policy, which was a requirement by Travelers, our auto carrier. The policy was intended to be developed for those employees that would run errands, make deposits, travel on behalf of the organization. And it was not for employees to maintain, that would have a commercial auto insurance for work purposes, which no one has. So that is why we are amending the policy, if that makes sense. So there are no financial considerations and the city attorney Blaine Finch has reviewed and rec, the policy. And our recommendation is to consider adoption of the resolution, XIC dot one. And so that the handbook, personal policy handbook can be amended and the options are to take final action at this regular meeting or refer it to a future meeting for continued deliberation and consideration.
Are there any questions? How do we like to proceed?
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve item 11C as listed on.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Is there any further discussion? May I have roll call vote, please? How do you vote, Commissioner Kayler?
Yes.
Commissioner Crowley?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Clayton?
Yes.
Commissioner Skidmore is absent. Mayor Allen?
And I vote yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Next, we will have our comments by our city manager.
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. Want to just highlight some operations and some community events that we have coming down the pipe. You might notice that our crews were out last week picking up trashel and K68, also cleaning up and demobilizing, if you will, from the, the car show. And we had yet another brick facade around the pillars who met their demise to a vehicle and crews were replacing the bricks there and maintaining our playground equipment in our parks around town. And then we did some paving operations on Blackhawk between Cedar and Poplar and also did some curb and storm box repairs as well. We did do sewer line maintenance and replaced a utility pole and of course repaired the stoplight there at First and Main that we have provided some updates on in recent meetings. Also want to highlight our one cent sales tax. You may have received information in the mail and we want to just highlight kind of our plan ahead and what we look to be going forward with. You'll see some educational material going out in this next week in your utility bills. So when citizens receive utility bills, they'll have some additional information on what the sales tax currently does for the city. We will also be distributing some postcards the last two weeks of October and we are planning and will submit some dates where we will have sales tax information open house. And we have a website at ottawakas.gov/saltstax for folks to go and, and can get some additional information as well. And we have a website at ottawakas.gov/saltstax for folks to go and, and can get some additional information as well. And then here's some community events that we can highlight, which as you know, we just completed another successful Omaire River Run. And we appreciate everyone for being wonderful hosts to those visiting our community and to all the outsiders for choosing to spend their time here in Ottawa with us. And especially, you know, our car show committee and all of the volunteers, as well as our public safety partners who turn out to help host this event. We've got some upcoming events. We've got a George Strait tribute coming up Saturday at the OMA. You can still register for the first annual city golf course championship. It, it is a public course. There's no private memberships. You can walk up and get a tee time. So we encourage folks, if you are a golfer, to, to please do so. Also want to highlight the upcoming Ottawa Main Street Harvest Moon Street Dance on October 4th, from 4 to 8 at Second Main. And wanted to highlight our director search. We had received 19 resumes and we are looking to interview three to five applicants with interviews scheduled the week of October 13th and again, the week of October 20th. And I'll, I'll circulate this so that you'll have that copy readily available as well. And that concludes my report. If there are no questions of myself or another member of the team. Thank you.
Sorry. Go ahead. Could you give kind of an update? And you may not know what we're looking at the timeline for the 11th or, pardon me, 17th street stoplight. I know we were waiting on a, I believe a camera part, something that was, was backordered delayed.
I'll turn this over now to Director Seif.
That's a great question, Commissioner Clayton. I appreciate it. The part is in. They went to install the part and the bracket that holds this fisheye camera up there to, it's a detection camera, broke, snapped. So we are about a week and a half, two weeks out from that intersection being repaired. And it is my understanding that it, it, it's one camera, but it sees all four directions. And it's going to be something that I feel is going to be a positive for that intersection and possibly other intersections in town as well. So possibly one to two weeks and we should have that thing up and running.
Is that a lane detection camera?
It is.
Okay, not a, running a stoplight detection.
No, no. This is lane detection.
I'm not saying I do. But just, I.
Specifically.
Social media that we're putting up cameras.
I am told.
You know, doing that.
That if there's nobody there, the light will not change for nobody.
I've sat there a couple times this week, but it, you just sit there and wait.
Yes. Cause right now, what had happened is the line, the detection loop was severed when they went through there with the boring. It wasn't marked, it wasn't detectable. And they've had it in auto this whole time. So something in the controller box malfunctioned here about a week or two ago. And it was doing some weird stuff. It was going off in different directions. And then we put it back in auto. We basically reset it and then it started going each, each direction each time. So.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
It is important to note that, and I don't know what that cycle's set at, but on the off chance that something's not being recognized, every so many cycles, it will run through a time cycle for each intersection. So if you get something that seems like it's longer than normal, that's what it's doing. It's just making sure that it hasn't inadvertently missed a vehicle. And, you know.
Like a motorcycle.
To process it, yes.
I know previously that, sometimes you'd get stuck there on a motorcycle without seeing you. And does flashing your lights signal that?
No, I believe the technology, the technology is still up and included, but the, our, our emergency response vehicles no longer utilize that aspect of it. So, yeah. So if you're sitting there flashing your lights, you're.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Also you had a moped, not a motorcycle.
That was true.
That was a moped.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to comments by the governing body. We'll start with Commissioner Crowley.
I have no comment.
Commissioner Kayler?
Not at this time.
Mayor Protim Clayton?
I just want to say for, you know, the proclamation for, for Fire Week, that I have a five-year-old who is already so excited. He doesn't know it yet, but he's excited to see the fire truck at school. And just shout out to, to your guys who are there for the picnic on the, out in the grass, that they were there and all the kids loved coming up and talking to them. And they did a great job. So thank you to them for that. And then it's that exciting time of year, driving around town, seeing the veterans banners start going up. I think those look awesome. And I think that's such a great use of that space, a great way to honor all of those folks who've served, both past, present, and then hopefully as more people start doing that, we start filling more and more poles. I know it takes a lot of work for me, you guys, 250? That's awesome. It takes a lot of work for you guys as crews to put those up. But I think, you know, for my seat, that is dollars well spent putting those up for members of our community to really highlight those people. And it's amazing as I drive how many names I'm like, oh, I, I know that name. I know that person or they're someone's dad or something like that. So just thank you obviously to all those veterans and then the crews for putting those up. They look great.
I don't have anything too exciting, but I was sitting here thinking about the golf course and the public comments we had tonight on it. And I was kind of wondering if maybe even if we think outside the box and it doesn't have to look like a net that is, that we picture like at Topgolf or something, but maybe like a natural barrier. Like look at maybe planting more adult trees on that side of the golf course or even perhaps rearranging that particular hole, depending on which way it goes. So I was just trying to think outside the box and if we can come up with a solution that maybe even looks a little different than, you know, something crazy expensive, like putting up a whole net or anything like that. So that is all I have and we will move on to announcements. October 8th, our city commission meeting at 4:00 PM has been canceled for our League of Kansas Municipalities Conference. October 15th, city commission meeting at 10:00 AM is here at City Hall. October 22nd, city commission meeting at 4:00 PM at City Hall. And October 29th, city commission meeting at 4:00 PM here at City Hall. And seeing no other business before.